Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, December 7, 2021. I have a meeting announcement. Council will be meeting in a hybrid format until further notice. We encourage speakers to join us, but also to continue joining virtually, as there will be a limited number of seats available in council chambers. Will the clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Kraus,
Here.
Mr. Lavell, Mr. O'Connor, Ms. Strasburger,
Here.
Mr. Wilson,
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
I have members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Our next order of business is proclamation, and I have one to be presented. Councilman O'Connor is going to present to our first responders. Please come forward.
Oh, Matthew, come on up.
Matthew.
Please, everyone come up.
Helter, okay, got it. All right, well, this is my first day back, and Teresa's making me do work already.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
No, thank you for letting me present this on your behalf. Whereas since the COVID-19 pandemic began in March 2020, many city and county employees who normally work in the city-county buildings set up protocol to work from home. Whereas on Friday, May 28, 2021, in addition to protocols, additional employees who would normally be in the office were off to Memorial Day weekend. Suddenly, an employee on the ninth floor of the building, Matthew Meisenhelter, is that right? Got it, okay, began experiencing chest pain. His coworkers immediately called 911. Whereas prior to first responders arriving, Matthew had collapsed, went into cardiac arrest. In the building at the time were our Public Safety Director and our Sergeant-at-Arms, whereas, who were among the first to assist Matthew, whereas Officer John performed CPR until medics and firefighters arrived. And whereas some quick-thinking bystanders utilized one of the many automatic external defibrillators located in the building, and when first responders arrived, they also used an automatic external defibrillator on Matthew, and paramedics had shocked him again once they arrived. And with their quick response, had saved Matthew. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and commend all those involved with saving his life that day and honor all first responders for the lifesaving work they do daily. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 7, 2021, to be First Responders' Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do you have a motion to approve in a second?
No, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, everyone. I can say I'm delighted to be here today and very happy in the company of these folks who made it possible for me to be here today and to say again, thank you for being trained professionals, being on-site, being calm, cool, and collected when they needed to be and doing what they needed to do to save my life. Like I said, I wouldn't be here today without these folks. And, you know, and this is what they do every day for all of us. And I can only say thank you, and again.
Also just wanted to recognize that there were other departments and other individuals that could not be here at this time. The Allegheny County Sheriff's Department, several fire and city medics, St. Moritz Security Firm, and several bystanders. So this was definitely a total team effort by the City of Pittsburgh, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Let's have all members, okay? But I do just want to say that we are so fortunate in the City of Pittsburgh to have the first responders that we have from our police, fire, EMS, homeland security, animal care and control, under Director History's leadership, and the chiefs that we have. We have amazing, amazing first responders, and we're really fortunate in the City of Pittsburgh. So thank you all for your work, and thank all of them for their work as well. Do you want everyone to come up for the photo?
Yeah.
Oh, power.
Thank you. Do you want us to give them to the director? We'll give them to the director, unless you want to take the ones from the minute.
Welcome back.
You want to take them or me take those? If you're going to give them to them, I'm glad. Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you. Be safe.
Excuse me.
Pardon me, please.
Your glasses. I would have put those on by accident. I would have been able to read. Thank you, everyone. I'm so glad that Matthew's here with us. And we have two to be read into the record, or three to be read into the record, two by Councilman O'Connor and one by Councilman Kraus. Madam Clerk, can you read this, please?
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2287. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, December 17, 2021, to be Eric Rosenthal Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman O'Connor also presents Bill Number 2288. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare December 9, 2021, to be Amnesty International USA Local Group 39 Day. And Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 2289. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, December 14, 2021, to be Chief Justice Emeritus Thomas G. Saylor in the City of Pittsburgh.
We have a motion to approve in a second.
No, move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, Councilman?
No, no, no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The proclamations are approved. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. We have the first speaker, please. And the first speaker I have is Ralph L. Williams. Ralph Williams? Is he signed on? Yeah, he's on. I see him. No, he's not.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Okay, good morning, Council. My name is Ralph Williams, and I was here, I spoke at the last meeting last time. And what I want to talk about today is, is I want to formally introduce myself. I am the President of the Allegheny County Transit Council. And what I want to talk about a little bit today, real quick, and I know you're not getting into this right now, but we have funding that's about to end for the state coming up for, involves board authority, and I know it involves a lot of neighborhoods and city council. And I'm asking that all city council people, please get involved with your state representatives, county council, and try to do a united front to get the new funding in place. Act 89 is about to expire sometime around 2023. So I just want to let everyone know here at City Council in regards to that and to formally introduce myself. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Dr. Ronald Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Miller, Beltshever, and Tallahassee, Florida. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate, 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. In the early 2000s, I became a member of the American Musicological Society. In the later 2000s, I created the Rondas, which is a dance and music group. At Richland High School in Pennsylvania, I played first-chair trumpet. I was president of the band. A concern of council is to act lawfully for love of country. A concern of council is to act with the, quote, "consent of the governed." This is consensus, 1776 U.S. Declaration of Independence. A concern, too, is to acknowledge dissent, disapproving dissensus, U.S. Constitution, 1789 amended. Terrence Blanchard, Black African-American, is a disestablishmentarian trumpeter who played for Denzel Washington's Bleak Gilliam in Spike Lee's Mo Better Blues, whose "You Better Play That Horn, Mother," like mine, acted by singer Abby Lincoln, Ivy in For Love of Ivy with Sidney Poitier, theme written by trumpeter Quincy Jones, sung by Shirley Horn, both colleagues of trumpeter Miles Davis, ah, influencers, all, of Terrence Blanchard. E. Collective Caravan Man, Dissensus Man, MLK, Malcolm X Man, Terrence Blanchard. Opera Redist, Fire Shut Up in My Bones at the New York Metropolitan Opera, first African-American person to have that done. Terrence Blanchard, for whom fusion of music, visual art, and words is nonviolent dissensus activism. I fully support this. I and the GIS are seeking to have him come to Pittsburgh. Who is TV's Ivy? The USA. I think that consensus government in Pittsburgh and the USA as a pattern voids the consensus, the consent of the governed for the love of anyone or anything that is not Ivy. I think this is lawless. And avoids dissent and the value of dissensus, also less than lawful. So this trumpeter sounds notes one to establish a Pittsburgher Office of Information and Intelligence, whose leaders will be elected via vote by paper ballot with receipt by all adult Pittsburgher residents, independently of any existing government agency. And two, to establish free speech zone opportunities throughout the city to allow citizens to peacefully express dissent and create dissensus without government censorship. Nothing in the Home Rule Charter of Pittsburgh, the PA Constitution prohibits one and two, but the U.S. Constitution Amendment 10 does, for love of TV's Ivy.
And our next speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi Mullen?
Good morning.
Morning, Naomi.
Hi, Teresa. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bonner. The Pennsylvania Constitution states, under political powers, that all power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety, and happiness. Where did some public servants who've been elected by us get the idea that they're lording over us? How can they make decisions for our community that we have lived in and been property owners in for decades? The PTS Board and administration created a controversy against us. After repeated speeches to the Board and City Council, they have not dropped the sale of Bonner School. It is a crime to use a falsehood to vote, create a resolution, sign a sales agreement, transfer a property, or create a legal contract under a misrepresentation. Officials have a duty to investigate and act against crime when notified. There have now been three community meetings with Gregory Coyle. It is eight months of no community support from Bonner. We even gave him a petition with 250 signatures on it. We want the building torn down and a green space to take its place. Gregory is operating in bad faith, and the school district officials are harming We the People of Bonner. We the People have repeatedly expressed significant concern about this harmful intrusive plan against our community. Regardless of political bent or racial makeup of our property owners, it is a no to development. We choose a green space at the former school. Who exactly benefits by harming Bonner? The mere specter of a detrimental development is now creating injury to us. Threats to our property value and well-being are occurring. Now, the false claim of community support has set this onslaught in motion. Lies can cause harm, and they already have. Waiting to unseat a single harmful elected official at a time is not an effective option. Meetings and speeches have thus far failed to stop the harm set in motion. Why should we pay for a tax against We the People? What options remain? Direct lawsuits upon rogue officials and tax revolts seem to be the most beneficial actions. Starving the beast and response via lawful claim seem to be the only good redress. Perhaps accessing the bonds, indemnity, and malpractice insurance of bad actors will work. My sincere, consistent request is that City Council create a resolution to block zoning change and support a green space to replace Bonner School Building. Do your part for the environment, reduce urban heat, reduce watershed to Route 51, increase green space to benefit all ages and stages, protect the children at the playground across the street. Let's make it wheelchair accessible to allow those who have difficult access.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Ikana Halmakena.
Greetings and good day. My title is Ikana Halmakena. I am the Grand Inca of the Aroqua Confederacy of Aboriginal and American People, also known as Indians. In 1916, my great-grandmother, Pearl Porter Crosby, moved to Pittsburgh from New Orleans with my great-grandmother in tow, who then gave life to my grandmother Marion, all Hill District natives. And now is being gentrified. It's an unsettling act. It's an unlawful act. You've now invited Fenway Group, who's proposed to buy the historic Lower Hill District. It's merely another invitation for foreign interest groups to gentify the area without consideration of who or what was on the historic site before they came. The many displaced people have become observers of a new playground for the rich and elite, never considering the sacred ground upon which you are building. It is my hope that Councilman Lavell will continue his efforts to hold them accountable for making sure there's representation for the marginalized people of the Hill District. I would like to acknowledge Erica Strasburger for some of her recent legislation that she's introduced to protect the environment from harmful chemicals such as PTHO and the Single Use Plastics Initiative that she introduced. Although the city itself doesn't directly pollute the air with the industrial complexes that once used to align our shores, the Braddock and Claritin plants are filled with harmful contaminants that make their way to the city and have a direct impact on our health and livelihood and the health of our children. It is up to us to fight for them, but they have no voice. They know not the air that they breathe. It is up to us to teach them how to fight in the future and use their voices. Injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. It is up to us to continue to mentor the people for all time. I am the voice of the Aboriginal indigenous people, and we are here to stay. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Armin Samai.
Hi there. Thank you, Councilwoman. I am here to support Councilman Wilson's legislation to clarify that bike lanes are moving lanes and should not be used for parking. That's Ordinance 2200. The Penn Avenue bike lanes are blocked almost every single time I ride in them, which is multiple times per week. A few weeks ago, I moved into the driving lanes to get around a parked vehicle, and within moments, a speeding car appeared behind me, honking and cursing and yelling obscenities to politely get me to move back into the bike lane, which I did as soon as I could. These incidents are terrifying, but not rare. I believe this legislation will both keep me safe and keep vehicle traffic on Penn Ave flowing smoothly. I also appreciate the exemption. A local funeral home near my house in Lawrenceville uses the bike lane regularly for overflow parking, and I think giving them access to a city sanctioned exemption with proper signage is a very fair compromise. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And that exhaust list of registered speakers, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address City Council? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2264, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Finance, Parks, and Recreation and Public Works to enter into an agreement with the Friends of Neil Log House pursuant to which the Log House will make renovations, capital improvements, and will thereafter further assist with operation and maintenance of the Log House and with the provision of a related program. Bill Number 2265, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a supplemental agreement with CBR McGuire for project design management services and reviews in connection with the various cities' construction projects to add funding for the construction phase of the South Side Signals Project, final design phase of the Liberty Avenue, Penn Avenue, and Smithfield Street Projects, and preliminary engineering phase of the Swindell Bridge and Larimer Avenue Bridge to increase the total not to exceed $1,951,150.76 from Agreement 53121.1, an increase of $726,514.77. Bill Number 266, Ordinance Amending to Pittsburgh Called Title V Traffic Article 7 Parking Chapter 541 General Parking Regulations by revisiting the title of Section 54104 Passenger and Loading Zones to Section 54104A by adding a new Section 54104B entitled Smart Loading Zones and by adding a new Section 54104C entitled Smart Loading Zones Rates and Penalties.
Thank you. And?
Madam President.
Councilman Coghill, yes.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council on Bill 2264.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Thanks, Madam President. Councilman Coghill and other members of council, would it be all right to waive the rules on 2265? I know it is also, there's a number of projects, but one of the projects under consideration here is the South Side Signals Project, which is the resignaling of 18th Street. And I'd like to, I'd like to waive the rule so that we could expedite that, that project. It's quite complex, quite complicated, and we're hoping to launch that by this coming spring.
So we have a motion?
Motion to waive the rules also on 2265.
So we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor of both bills, being the rules of council waived for both bills?
Aye.
Aye.
And any further discussion before? Okay. The bills will appear on tomorrow's standard committee agenda.
Thanks, Madam President.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilman Kraus for Councilwoman Gross.
Madam President, I just have to note for the record that I am actually here. My camera isn't working today.
I told, I said something that's got to be wrong. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2267, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the proposed project located at 227, 229, 231, 231 and 1/2 North Aiken Avenue.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
And Councilman Lavell, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Uh-oh, sorry. Councilman Lavell presents Bill Number 2268, Ordinance Amending City Code Section 1778 to include certain definitions as they pertain to the scope of review of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. Bill Number 2269, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 601, which authorized the mayor and the chief equity officer to enter into an agreement with the American Association of University Women in order to conduct a work-smart training program as part of a pay equity initiative designed to reduce the gender pay gap in Pittsburgh and further providing for the expenditures under the terms of said agreement at a cost not to exceed $39,959. Bill Number 2270, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Brian Dugan in the Amount of $3,345.34 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to a Stop Vehicle from a City EMS Vehicle on April 24, 2020. Bill Number 2271, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of Two Warrants in Favor of Plavcheck Construction Company totaling $30,349.98, which shall be allocated as follows: $25,000 payable from the Department of Parks and Recreation, $5,349.98 payable from the Department of Law, and final settlement related to litigation in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number 2272, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of Two Warrants in Favor of Plavcheck Construction Company totaling $56,391.1, which shall be allocated as follows: $45,113.09 payable from the Department of Public Works, and $11,277.92 payable from the Department of Law, and final related to litigation in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number 2273, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of Two Warrants in Favor of Plavcheck Construction Company totaling $30,136.76, which shall be allocated as follows: $5,370.75 payable from the Department of Public Works, and $24,766.1, payable from the Department of Law, and final settlement related to litigation filed in the Court of Common Pleas of Allegheny County. Bill Number 2274, Resolution to Authorize and Direct the Incuring of Non-Electorial Debt Through the Issuing of a Series of General Obligation Bonds of the City in the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of $64,655,000. Bill Number 2275, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a License Agreement with Oak Moss Consulting LLC to allow the performance of due diligence, investigations, and pre-development planning on designated city property in order to facilitate the construction of a mixed-use commercial and residential development in the Hazelwood Community. in the Hazelwood Community. Bill Number 2276, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into a Grant Agreement with Allegheny County for the Receipt of Coronavirus Relief Funds in the Amount of $50,000. Bill Number 2277, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 714 entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance, and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with 2021 Emergency Solution Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,214,418, to Include the Allegheny County Housing Authority as an Additional Signatory. Bill Number 2278, Resolution Authorizing Appropriations Salaries and Capital Expenditures of the Parks Tax Trust Fund for the 2022 Fiscal Year Beginning January 1, 2022.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2279, Resolution Authorizing the City to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Humane Animal Rescue of Pittsburgh for Services in Connection with the Humane Detention Care and/or Euthanasia of Domesticated Animals at a Cost Not to Exceed $1,125,000. Bill Number 2280, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into a Professional Services Agreement with Lexapole LLC for Software Subscription-Based Policy Management and Training Services at an Overall Cost Not to Exceed $436,049.67. Bill Number 2281, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter Into a Data Use Agreement with the Center for Police Research and Policy Housed within the University of Cincinnati to Engage in a Process and Outcome Evaluation of Training and Technical Assistance as Part of the Academic Training to Inform Police Responses Initiative. Agreement shall be at no cost to the city. Bill Number 2282, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter Into a Corporation Agreement with the Center for Emergency Medicine for of Western Pennsylvania for a Televisit Pilot Program. Bill Number 2283, Resolution Further Amending and Supplemented Resolution Number 863 entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $575,000 from the Four Mile Run Project to Street Resurfacing. Bill Number 2284, Resolution Further Amending and Supplemented Resolution Number 647 entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget by Transferring a Total of $250,000 from Sylvain Avenue Bike Pit Connection in Hazelwood Complete Street Improvement to Street Resurfacing.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2285, Resolution Amending Resolution 725 by Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works and the Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into an amended Agreement with Cartograph Systems, Inc., to Extend the Agreement for Three and One Half Years to Meet the Needs of the City and an Additional Sum Not to Exceed $731,593.75.
Thank you. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2286, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840 entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget, the 2020 CDBG Program, and the 2020 through 2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Comprehensive Revenue Management System by $90,550 and Increasing the Remediation of Condemned Buildings by $90,550.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings.
Madam, excuse me, Madam President.
Yes.
Just want to request the way the rules of council, so Bill 2286 appears on our standing committee agenda tomorrow.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second, very brief discussion.
Brief discussion.
I caused that. I don't mean to disrupt things.
I saw that. He's, he's a disruption today.
I'm a troublemaker. I don't mean to, but you, it's only $90,000. I appreciate the councilman willing to do this, but every penny we can put into demo this as quickly as we can is, is a step forward. So I appreciate the council's willingness to do that.
Thank you. That, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The bill appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no new papers. We'll move on to unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, our next order of business is the reports to committee for final action. All in favor of the passage or vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. I'm sorry. Can we begin with Councilman?
Was I supposed to make a resolution now? Okay.
Yours is at the end.
I have a motion, Madam President.
Can we have Councilman O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services?
There's like 40.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 2259, Report to the Committee on Public Safety Services for December 1 of 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2219, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with A Step Up Veterinary, Inc., for Professional License Veterinary Services to the City's Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Animal Care and Control, and an Overall Cost to the City Not to Exceed Bill Number 2220, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Coral Center for Civic Leadership in the Amount of $6,000 for Fellowship Services Provided to the City for Placement Fees and Public Sector Fellows. Bill Number 2221, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 47, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the city into an amended Professional Services Agreement with Endtime Solutions, Inc., for EMS and Police Scheduling and Timekeeping Services at a Cost Not to Exceed $902,525.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage or vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 2260, Report to the Committee on Public Works for December 1, 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2206, Resolution Granting unto Presbyterian University Health System, Inc., their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to reconstruct an existing ADA concrete ramp retaining walls and bulwarks at 3459 Fifth Avenue in the Fourth Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 2207, Resolution Granting unto Er Trugel and Nesslahan Kilik, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to reconstruct three existing sets of steps and to install four tree pits and in awning at 4632 Center Avenue in the Fourth Ward, 8th Council District. Bill Number 2208, Resolution Granting unto Magnite Bank Tower, LLC, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new projecting sign at 404 Wood Street in the First Ward, 6th Council District. Bill Number 2209, Resolution Granting unto 5803 Center, LLC, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install below-grading shoring along Commerce Street at 5803 Center Avenue in the rear in the 8th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 2210, Resolution Granting unto Gustavo and Emily Cardona, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense in existing retaining wall presently constructed in the right-of-way at 130 Borough Street in the 16th Ward, 3rd Council District. Bill Number 2211, Resolution Granting unto Pearl Street Townhomes, their successors, and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install an underground storm sewer at 210 Pearl Street in the 9th Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 2244, Resolution Providing for a Second Supplemental Agreement with Michael Baker for Contract Administration and Construction Inspection Services Costs Associated with the Small Grants Project Agreements and Providing for the Payment of Costs relating to Allegheny Circle Phase 2 Not to Exceed $190,663.5, a $50,577.63 increase from the previous agreement. Bill Number 2245, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement between the City and Air Cleaning Systems Incorporated for Design, Engineering, and Installation Services of Emergency Response Vehicle Exhaust Systems at Multiple Locations Throughout the City at a Cost Not to Exceed $654,272.40. Bill Number 2255, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title IV Public Places and Property and Title V Traffic and Article V Legislative Chapter 151 to Regulate Parking in City Home Surface Lots, City Utilized Property, and On-Street Parking Spaces Reserve for Paid Parking for City Employees.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? I'm just going to add for this bill, 2255, for the parking, we're going to add additional spaces for the 4th Avenue, so I'll put that amendment next week. Bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage or vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 2261, Report to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for December 1, 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2200, Ordinance Amending and Supplemented in the Pittsburgh City Code Title V Traffic Article VII Parking Chapter 541 General Parking Regulations Section 54102 for Prohibition in Specified Places. Bill Number 2224, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDBG Program, the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program so as to Identify Specific Public Service Grant Projects of the Mayor's Office and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement for Operation, Administrative Expenses, Maintenance, Purchase of Equipment, and/or Rehabilitation of Neighborhood Facilities on behalf of the Residents of the City.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
I have an amendment that I would like to offer up. I sent it around to, just explain it real quick. I sent it around to members yesterday, and it just further clarifies and supports what our ADA coordinator at the city agrees with. Just amends the one part of the bill for dropping, drop off and pickup of disabled people.
I think we have an amendment. Second. Oh, any further discussion? All in favor, the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
No. Is there any further discussion on any of the other bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage or vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 2262, Report to the Committee on Innovation Performance and Asset Management for December 1, 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2222, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance to Enter Into a Two-Year Professional Services Agreement with Victor Stanley Services to meet the needs of the city at a sum not to exceed $212,166. Bill Number 2223, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 676, which authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with Malka to provide a building benchmarking management platform software solution by extending the term of the contract by three years at a cost not to exceed $80,000. Bill Number 2227, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, City Clerk, and/or Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a contract or agreement with Preserviva, Inc., for Public Access and Digital Preservation Software for the Records Management Division. Total cost not to exceed $64,100 over five years.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage or vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
What do I do? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 2263, Report to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for December 1 of 2021 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 2212, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the CMU Health Wellness and Athletic Center, Tech Street.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage or vote aye when the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and we'll begin with Councilman Coghill. You need a motion?
Yes, Madam President. If I could, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add a resolution for a small game of chance.
You have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion?
No. You know, we'd have had it in earlier, but I understand they kind of changed the timeframe.
Okay, so now do you make the motion for the small game of chance?
We have to get the vote on the, this has been the rules. Yeah.
Yeah.
In the rules first.
Motion to, okay.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's approved. Now, do you have to make your motion?
So, yeah, this is just to, you know, this was, this was just to make, make the amendment. Earlier, I guess, we used to have where we had to put this in a few days before. Now I think they changed that rule, so they moved the date at the last minute on us, so that's the purpose of it.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The small game of chance is approved, and that moves us on to now. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry. I forgot. Yes, go ahead.
Councilman Coghill presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh hereby recognizes Love Carrick to be a civic and/or service organization within the-
within the context of the Pennsylvania Small Games of Chance Act as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved, I think we're all going to the event now. And Councilman Burgess, you need to make a motion to request.
Yes. I make a motion to hold a series of executive sessions today on personnel matters.
Motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And motions approved. That moves us on to meeting announcements. We have budget meetings, will continue this afternoon at one-thirty with the Department of Innovation Performance chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. Tomorrow, Wednesday, December eighth at ten AM, council will hold our standing committee's meeting. Speaker registration closes at nine AM Wednesday morning. To register, please fill out the signup form on the city, on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at four-one-two-two-five-five-two-one-three-eight. Also, tomorrow afternoon at one-thirty, council will hold our budget meetings with the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service chaired by Councilman Kraus. And on Thursday, December ninth, budget meetings will continue with the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure at ten AM chaired by Councilman Coghill. All budget meetings will be streamed live. Also, on Thursday, December ninth at one-thirty, council will hold our, hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion on the proposed annexation of the Borough of Wilkinsburg, which will be chaired by myself, Council President Smith. Do we have anything else from members?
Madam President.
Councilman.
I want to, on, um, yesterday, um, the Pittsburgh Public School Board reorganized and our former colleague, Sala Houdin, was elected to be president of the school board. I have had extensive conversations with Sala and I think that as they begin to look for a new superintendent, given a former colleague in that position, I think it really will strengthen our ability to work collaboratively with the school board to create greater symmetry and connection between this council and the public schools and the city and the public schools. I think his election opens the door for that school board, council collaborative opportunity.
Thank you, anyone, anything else? Congratulations to Mr. Houdin, and I would just say, let's hope that that's the case because we've been at this for a very long time, trying to build relationships. And we actually had a staff member in Councilman Coghill's office that actually was a board member at the time she was working here. So let's hope that these relationships can strengthen. We have to do something better than what we're doing. Is anything else from members? That said, Kevin motion to excuse the, there's no absent members, to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Any? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you.